Good evening and welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for July 22, 2019. If you have cell phones, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. If you wish to have extended conversations, please do so in the hall or decorum of the meeting. Tonight's voting alternate member will be Mr. Mark Brier. We'll move forward under Continued Business GB 2012-25 for variances at Westgate Development, Inc. at 153 Westford Street, Section 5.1. The applicant is seeking variance approval from the zoning board to convert an existing building at 153 Westford Street into four dwelling units. The applicant is seeking to reinstate previous relief from the zoning board that elapsed before work commenced. The property is in the traditional neighborhood multifamily TMF zoning district and requires a variance under Section 5.1. Table of dimensional requirements for frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, lot per dwelling unit, and open space and any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Welcome back.
Good to be back, thank you. My name is Tan Pham, located at 540 Lowell Street. So I talked to the surveyor and he submitted two plans. This time he suggested that, well, obviously the garage is to be raised and then they also, because after talking to Jared, he also suggested to, which the survey did, which is to take this little set up too. And he, the surveyor, draw up two plans. One is eight parking spaces but in stack, stacked parking. And then the other plans is for eight parking spaces but in perpendicular. But in, for the perpendicular plan, which Jared suggested, instead of the usual requirement as nine by 18 for this TMF zone, we don't have enough space for nine by 18 if we do perpendicular. So we suggested, so Jared suggested and the surveyor draw eight by 18, which is required, which meet the requirement for SSF, TSF, TTF, USF zone, but not for TMF zone. So.
Sorry, I was just referring, because we had so many different plans. So we do have the final copy with the eight by 18.
The eight by 18 we submitted.
No, I'm agreeing. I was looking at, we had, we had received several different versions.
Yes, because.
So you are going, just for clarification, public record, you're going to go with the eight by 18?
Eight by 18, yes, because I think that is the better looking for the neighborhood and I think it's just a more practical. And then plus, if I, if I got approved for the eight by 18, I don't have to go back to the zoning planning board. Because if I go with the stacked packing app, even if I get approved here, I have to go back to the zoning board to, to, I guess, to redo it, I guess.
Is that all you wish to discuss at this moment? Is that all you have?
Excuse me?
Is that all you have right now?
Yes, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Those are my total changes. Okay. That being said, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board, Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the petitioner for working with DPD and our recommendations for the updated plans. And I do agree that the eight by 18 parking plan, it fits in and works well. So I have no issues with this variance. So I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments. I mean, it's a good thing. I, well, I take it back. I see that you have a dumpster there already. Are you, have you started working on the system, on the, on the property already or not?
Excuse me, can you say that again?
I see that you have a dumpster there already.
No, there's no dumpster there, yeah.
Oh, no?
Yeah, because they, you know, we cannot touch the property until.
It's approved.
Yeah, so until we pull a permit. And we really hope to, you know, because the property has been there for a while and even we cannot, like, pull a permit to change the, some of the doors and windows and, you know, so.
All right, okay.
So I hope we can start, you know, soon.
Mr. Chairman, it's a good thing. I don't have any other comment. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
I think the eight by 18 is the perfect compromise and as a result, in favor.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I am very happy to see that we've developed a plan that shows a perpendicular to Westford Street spaces. Because I couldn't understand how backing onto Westford Street with eight cars during high congestion, high traffic times would ever be successful and safe. Because Westford Street is very congested early in the morning and in the evening and cars backing out onto that street from that site, especially where the previous design that was striped for a number of years had spaces, had five spaces, I can think currently shown on the site that are perpendicular to Westford Street. So, or they're parallel to Westford Street there anyway. They don't back out onto Westford Street, so I'm glad to see that.
I agree.
One of the prerequisites required for site plan submission for a variance is a topographic plan. And that was requested at the last meeting, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
A month ago, actually.
Yes.
And that is important because of drainage. The site currently, if you go to the LowellMass.gov site for GIS information, the grade at Westford Street at the curb cut is about 142. And the grade at the rear of the site is 136 and falling. So the site slopes from front to back by something excessive of five feet. And if you notice the property adjacent to you on either side, they both have homes or building structures that have a few steps up in the front but have garages under them. Both properties have a full level accessible behind them. So we do know that the site slopes significantly from front to back. And so my, my thinking is that by extending the parking field to the rear of the site, we're creating a drainage scenario that needs to be resolved. And you haven't shown that on the site plan yet, how that's being resolved. In fact, the site plan that was submitted didn't even document the limit of the proposed pavement. There's a dotted line that doesn't even have a label on it as far as what it's referencing. Jared did create a set of comments that he highlights what potentially could be green space so that it could be used as snow storage, which we need to have, and also for a gravel strip, which the Lowell Water Utility is requiring. But we need to have that documented so that we have a successful scenario for water mitigation because it would be unfortunate in a rain event if we flood the adjacent property behind you. And, and there's significant rain events these days, especially this year. I'm a little worried that the quantity of water coming off of that expanded field, as well as that would also accept half of the structure because the roof slope goes into that parking field as well. So we have half of the roof structure as well as that expanded pavement sloping to the rear of the site into what the Lowell Utility, Water Utility is asking for is a gravel strip. But it needs to be substantial, in my opinion, to mitigate the drainage that would be coming off of that area. I think it's roughly 440, 4,000 square feet of drive, lane, parking, and roof. It would be adding water to the rear of the site. So I'd like to make a condition that you label the area of pavement as shown by the comments by Jared this afternoon. He's got, I think, one of the diagrams that he submitted with parking comments that shows a yellow area that would be available for drainage. It's under Section 4.
Yes.
Where the existing shed to be raised and part of the garage is raised, that that would be labeled as space to be available for snow storage and gravel drainage.
Yes, the, the yellow area right there. About the.
I just want to, I have a few more comments and then I'll just speak if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Then I think we have to also clarify the limit of the fence and the landscaping because both of those were not defined clearly on the revised layout. The fence stops short of the area where the shed is being removed and I think the fence should extend to include the area where the existing shed is being removed so the fence is continuing to shield the parking field from the neighbor. And then I think the landscaping should also run along that new fence so that we end up with a landscaping scenario that encompasses the parking area. The parking area, the area that'd be used for snow storage, the drainage, whatever we end up with there. So I'd like a condition for the extension of the fence and the landscaping if my members accept that as well to be added. I do want this project to go forward. I think it's unfortunate that the neighbors have lived with this undeveloped site for as long as they have and it's important, I think, to have this project go forward. But I think it has to be done in a way that doesn't create flooding on the neighboring property and is responsible for mitigating any drainage on site and also supports the attitude towards screening that we want to have for new properties going forward. So I just have those two comments. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. The topographical thing, when, after the meeting last time, there were lists of things that, I don't even know what topographical thing is. So I just, after Jared emailed me those lists right there, I just forwarded to my surveyor, James Aho. And the, he was telling me that the, the difference is, he draw it on the site plan too, because the difference is one foot. He was telling me that the property is basically level. The difference is only one foot, so that's the reason why he just draw it.
Have you been to the site behind you, the, the property that actually is on the adjacent street? I think it's Nichols Street. Have you been to the property behind you?
Yes.
Okay.
I went back there. There's a retaining.
Yep, and you do realize you have a lot of foundation wall exposed on your existing property. So, and I think you can see on the property adjacent to you on the corner of Westford Nichols, there's a full garage below the first floor adjacent to you. And if you go to the property on the other side of you on Westford Street, there's a full garage below the finished floor on that property. I understand that it might be hard to know grading with just the naked eye, but if you go to the website on LowellMass.gov GIS and open up the map for your property and click on topo, you'll see the grades that are there and it's not one foot. So I'm sorry that you were misinformed by your surveyor, but it's, it's quite a bit more than one foot. It's significant.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was told. So I mean, you know, that's not my area of expertise, so I'm only.
But it's also a prerequisite for site plan submission for a variance to provide a one foot topo. It's in the requirements under the Mass zoning bylaws, Lowell, Lowell Mass zoning bylaws. So it's actually a requirement that would be waiving since you're not submitting it. Anyway, that's, that's why I was excited to see it because it's a significant slope that needs to be resolved from a drainage standpoint.
Okay. So, yeah, so we will do the, the yellow area.
Great.
Just like Jared draw on the Section 4 right there. So it will be either, so it wouldn't, that area will not be pavement, so there will, water will be escaped. Actually, the people from storm, storm team or whatever, they call my surveyor today and he already talked about it. And we saw him this and he liked it. Because he, what he, my surveyor was telling me that it is an improvement over existing because, you know, the property has been like that for years without, you know, any drainage or whatever. So this right here is actually an, you know, either this to be green area, it will be a significant improvement. And then the, the storm people, I think Mr., I forgot his name, but he agreed with that. It's an improvement.
It is, it is something that Jared has instructed us to review his comments. It's not something that you've submitted, so I don't think you can take credit.
No, no.
It's something that we're kind of asking.
No, because when, when Jared suggested to me, because I told my surveyor to put something on there as a gravel strip and then the surveyor said like, he doesn't know what to put because there's nothing in the back of the property. So, but I mean, but Jared suggested this plan and, you know, and it's great. I'm not taking credit for it or anything like that, you know, it's, yeah, don't get me wrong.
We'll go with Jared's plan because it looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis Shaw.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pham, I want to thank you for working with DPW on trying to alleviate the issues we had the last time that we were here. And I think you did, did a great job in trying to, you know, set things straight and things that, you know.
Yes, I tried.
Yeah, previously, my concerns were with the parking and we had previously, I know we previously passed relief, conditioned on a parking plan that never got demonstrated and never got passed in. And that wasn't to your, that wasn't to your fault because obviously that was prior owners who brought that, who brought that forward and didn't do anything with it. But, but I agree with what Dennis is, what Dennis had mentioned as far as seeking conditions on the, the fence on the east side of the property having to be extended all the way to the lot line in the back. Need a landscaping plan and also the label, label of the area of the payment designed for drainage. One thing that did come up, I was looking at the comments too, was as far as the, the parking plan. And I do, I actually do prefer the perpendicular layout too, so I'm glad you picked that. Stacked parking, it kind of.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, there's nothing really wrong with it. It's just, with this, with this many units, it can become a hassle, especially when, you know, people have to come in and come out to move cars left and right, especially on a busy street like Westford Street. But it did say that you, you are, you could exist, you know, shrink the curb cut down to 22 feet for perpendicular parking. I mean, that may, you know, probably alleviate some of the privacy as far as that is. I mean, is that, is that an intention? Do you have any intention to do that or is that?
Can you say that again?
So number five on the comments that Jared provided, Mr. Alves, Jared Alves from DPD, did, did make an indication that you could shrink the existing curb cut to 22 feet from the existing 30 feet.
Yes.
Do you have any intention of doing that or?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what required, then I would have to do it.
No, no, it's not really required, but I mean, it's kind of, I think that's for the purposes of, I don't, I think it's more for alleviating privacy, you know, putting some, I don't know, maybe, Patrick, can you try to explain to?
But if you reduce, so do I understand it correctly? We reduce it from 30 to 22?
You can reduce it to 22, yeah.
Yeah, but if you reduce it to 22, isn't harder for the car to move in and out?
Probably would be, yeah. So I'm just asking, but I was just asking if that's your intention.
Yeah.
If that's, I mean, you don't have to, you can keep it, keep it as is. It's just, I'm just trying to make sure if that's something you intend to do, but I'll leave it. According to what Jared has provided, you could do that.
But I mean, if that, that is something we want me to do, I'd do it. I mean, I just want to move forward because the property has been sitting there for too long.
I got you. No, that's fine. I'm just trying to get your intentions and what you, what you plan on doing with the property. But again, I, if you're in agreement with the conditions as Dennis laid out, I mean, I think that's, that's reasonable. I certainly, like I said, I want to see this property developed as well and I understand it was a, you know.
I want so too, yeah.
And I'm glad that you're doing everything, you know, to try to alleviate all the concerns that this board had at the last hearing and I wish you the best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So when we, when we met last time, we gave, we had some dialogue in what some of the requirements were and you, you are in receipt of the comments from DPD. And you're, you're receipt of, you received a copy of the comments from DPD from Jared.
Yes.
Correct, and we went through those. Part of, part of what Mr. McCarthy was referring to was the prerequisite of submittal. That's a variance requirement and I would have, I would have expected to see that here today. Whether it was a disconnect between yourself and the surveyor, ultimately you have to, you know, we, we have to have all applicants follow the, follow the process. So without that, in my view, I won't call it an incomplete package because a colleague has, has asked for a, a condition and I, I can, I can see that, but you're putting us back in a precarious, you're putting me, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but in the zoning in a precarious position by not having these prerequisites. We can't, we want to move forward for you. I'm not going to look to a continuance here, but I, it needs to be clear that a package needs to be complete. So that being said, we do have these conditions and I will yield two comments from, from my fellow board members and from, from Patrick on this. I'd like to move forward with a vote, but I also would like to see an administrative review once we need the landscape plan and the topical is, is such a requirement because it's, it's greater than one feet. It's closer to eight to 11 feet. And if we don't have that as part of the submittal and we approve this, in my opinion, we subsequently, we're approving a variance with an incomplete application. I know you've, you've, you're new at this and you, and you worked hard. I know last meeting, there was a lot coming at you. There's a lot that goes into it. And the end game for, for you, for the residents and the neighbors and certainly for the city is to improve that property and, you know, I, I know you're going to do a wonderful job over there. I just feel very, very adamant that we have to have at least that as part of the submittal of the package before we move forward. So if we, if we do accept it as a condition, I would like to see that sent to us via email in a, in a timely manner for review. And Patrick, I don't know.
So, so I just want to clarify, you.
Let me, let me finish, please. So Patrick, in light of not having that, which was, which was, it is a requirement, it's in the comments and it's not, it's not being presented, if we do move forward with a vote, will he be able to submit, will the petitioner be able to submit that and we can, we can at least have correspondence from your office that it was submitted? It's accurate?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I would, I wanted to say is, you know, we couldn't send it as an email to you guys and then have comments from you because that's obviously a violation of the public meeting. So, you know, we can obviously acknowledge that we were, when we are in receipt of a plan that's suitable to the board and which shows the requirements.
And it makes, yeah, I mean, that, that's essentially what I'm, what I'm, I'm seeking.
Sure.
Certainly, you know, you and, and your colleagues are doing a great job. I just don't, I think it's kind of, it's borderline a precedent of an incomplete application since it has been discussed on the record. It was, it's a prerequisite named in the comments, so we will make a condition, sir, that you submit that.
Yes.
To DPD for their review and it's a note, it'll be a notice to the, to the board.
Okay.
And it's, I wanted it to be part of the record. Dennis?
I just want to point out that part of the importance of that topo is how the Lowell Water Utility sees the plan. The plan that was submitted doesn't show topo, so the Lowell Water Utility doesn't have the information that there's a strong grade there that influences the water to the back of the site and needs to be mitigated before it pours off the site. So part of that landscaping area that you have in the back there, whether it's gravel, mulch, or grass, is going to be a slope. So there's going to be, or retaining wall. If you want to pay for retaining wall, pay for retaining wall. But the area available for the gravel to go, that's going to be the drainage, they're, they're asking for a gravel drainage strip, is going to be less because part of it's going to be taken up with slope for that grade change. And the Lowell Water Utility doesn't have that information. So I think that once the topo is resolved and the proposed grades are developed that Lowell Water Utility needs to weigh in on what's available after that's developed for the water then to be put into a gravel drainage swale and whether that's enough. Only because we don't have that information. We don't have the topo, we don't have the way of mitigating the slope. So, anyway, I just want to raise that, that I, I think that not only are we in the dark, the Lowell Water Utility is as well.
Yeah, it does have a, it does have a multi-layer effect on, on the products, project and the approval of a complete variance. And, and moving forward, you know, in fairness to you, yourself and future petitioners and your neighbors, we, we need to make sure that we uphold the zoning board bylaws. Any other comments or concerns? Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I think overall, the petitioner is trying to work very hard with, with the, with DPD, with us, trying to get this project moving forward. I think for me, the, the biggest concern was, was the parking and the parking plan and that's been resolved. But, but I do agree with Mr. Chairman and Mr. McCarthy that the topography plan and the drainage degrading, it's, you know, flooding and all that, landscape, landscape plan, it's, you know, a requirement for the application. You know, I, I feel a little hesitant with voting tonight. If we do, do go with a vote, you know, I will vote, but it probably won't be in favor because I, like, like you said, Mr. Chairman and Mr. McCarthy. McCarthy, and all the members of the board, the topography and the grading and drainage is a concern. And I just, you know, I think that the proper documents are needed as well, after hearing all the comments of my colleagues. So, those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. McCarthy?
Sorry, let me, sorry about that. The drive lane is 21 or 22 feet, and so, being in excess of that with a curb cut makes no sense. In fact, it's less safe for that first parking space. So, mitigating that to be matching the drive lane, so that the 30-foot curb cut that currently exists is reduced to matching the drive lane, whether it's the 21 or 22-foot dimension, I think is important, because you could have a car potentially trying to turn in adjacent to where that car is parked.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Patrick, we're, we're at a little, we do have to think of other, other departments in this, in this particular case, as it relates to the topo, because...
Sure. So, I mean, we have received the department's comments already. You know, Lowell Regional Waste Water Utility recommended a one-foot wide gravel strip. They're familiar with the GIS website, they use it every day. You know, I feel like the garage is there and currently, there's a foundation. To my knowledge, the foundation is staying, if not, the grade isn't changing for it to become parking, so I don't know how much that's really changing the topography anyways in terms of drainage, and I imagine that's what Waste Water Utility has, has considered. You know, we always take their, we don't really argue with their opinions, because they are the stormwater reviewing department. And also, historically, we have received a lot of plans that are subject to DPD approval in terms of landscaping, which, you know, perhaps that's not a preferred course of action by the board, but I do think we've historically always done that.
Yeah, I agree. We have in the past, we've done landscape plans, we've done impervious submittals. This particular submittal is, to me, is new. So, I'm comfortable moving with, forward with a vote. I do want, I do want you to get moving here, as I do want the meeting to move forward. But part of, part of my condition was that, that topo is submitted to DPD.
Yes.
It's reviewed and approved.
Yes.
Communication will be sent from DPD to the board members as a notice for public record, and no, the project won't be, will not move forward until you're in compliance with the conditions.
Okay, I agree.
Any other comments?
A quick question on that, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think, would that submittal of the topo plan, should we have the petitioner label the area for payment as any of the drainage that, you know, whatever he's planning on doing, wouldn't that be the most appropriate way of trying to, so he's not submitting too many plans that we're not?
Yeah, he can, yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, I would work with your surveyor, he should, he should know what we're looking for. When you, just, we're looking not to get, have to submit multiple plans, so you can, you can submit a combined plan, if you will.
Yes.
I don't want to confuse anything here, but Patrick, you thought that the foundation would, would remain?
I don't know if that's been a plan yet, but I do imagine that that's being, the grade won't change versus the parking if, from now to the future parking.
The foundation is a rubblestone foundation that isn't adequate for retaining wall to hold soil for a parking field.
So, but I don't think that the grade would change if it becomes parking, if the, if the foundation's removed.
So, the, so if the foundation's removed, the whole field, if you will, will either be sloped up from the property line, or there'll be a retaining wall put in. We don't know what's going to take place, but the foundation wall isn't adequate to be a retaining wall, because it's not structural for retaining walls, it's barely structural for a foundation.
I don't, sorry, I don't think the edge of the garage is going to be the retaining wall, because from the end of the garage, there are about three feet, three or four feet until the end of the property. That's according to my understanding, right? So, I don't think...
I, I agree. I think the foundation wall is going to collapse on its own weight once you do the demo for the garage and the storage room, because I don't think it has much integrity. And, and one more thing about the drainage, excuse me, I don't know. I, I think we should try to condition it and move forward if we can, but, oh, your surveyor isn't a civil engineer.
Excuse me?
Your surveyor is not a civil engineer.
Okay.
So, your surveyor is a surveyor, civil engineer is a civil engineer. Civil engineer understands topo, drainage, understands things differently than a surveyor, and I think that's part of the issue, that you're relying on a surveyor to do civil engineering, in my opinion. So, but whatever you want to do, it's your, it's your project, but it's a different type of discipline, civil engineering, that takes a lot more into the soil, type of soil, the type of drainage, that it takes a lot more into consideration than a surveyor does, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Van?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to throw you through the applicant, I just wanted to say that, you know, the, what the board is asking, or, you know, members of the boards, is the topography plan for, for drainage grading and for mitigation of water runoff, and it's a requirement per zoning code and ordinance. You know, I think, I'm speaking for myself as well. If we go through with a vote, I'm leaning towards not approving this, so I just want to let you know that without these documents, I, me personally, I just don't feel comfortable setting, setting a precedent that, you know, people are missing documents and we can go forward, you know, and kind of submit them later, and then maybe there's additional comments or confusion, or upgrades, updates that are needed, because the plans are not up to scale of what the requirements of the departments are of the city. So, I just wanted to let the applicant know, if you go through with a vote, which is, is fine, you're right, but I feel comfortable not voting in favor. So, I just wanted to let the applicant know that and that, let that be known. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Any other comments, concerns?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Philip?
Yeah, I, I just want to find out, what have I left to do? Is it, how much, how much time does it take for him to do it?
Are you referring to how long it will take him to get the topo plan?
Yes.
Patrick, would you put a timestamp on that?
I don't, I don't know, I don't really want to, just because I'm not sure how long.
I think it'd be difficult.
Yeah, it's not something that I would necessarily think could be, I couldn't guarantee that it would be ready for the next meeting.
No. No, you probably, in this building season, you could be looking at, yeah, I was going to say three months, you're, you're looking at a fair, fair amount of time. That was the whole and purpose and the intention of our last meeting and the application checkoff list. As Mr. McCarthy has mentioned, you know, you made comment that on several occasions, your surveyor said, "It's fine, it's fine." And I'm not being disrespectful to the, to the surveyor, but it's not, it's not as disciplined of expertise as, as, as it pertains to this particular plan. So, I, I too have, I have reservations making, making a decision and putting a vote on, on this particular petition in light of where, where we are, and the fact that we've had, we have already had a condition.
So, we cannot, excuse me, so we cannot even make a decision and then with conditions? You know, get a vote with a condition?
Conditions are generally reserved for non-prerequisite items. This is a, this is a requirement of the application itself. It's kind of like asking us to waive, waive a, a plan, a site plan itself. You just, quite frankly, homework wasn't done, you know. If this was a landscape plan, and we've done that in the past, we've accepted, and we've moved forward with that as a condition, because it's a landscape plan, it doesn't have, doesn't hold the weight pro or con to you, to us, to, to your neighbors, as this does in, in the water department for, for the retention. That's why when we, when we met and we talked about the condition, we, we went through line item by line on it, and we, and you provided that opportunity. So, I, I myself, my comments are made. Any other comments? Mr. Brea?
Mr. Chairman, I was ready to vote in favor of your petition. That was certainly my intention, regrettably, regrettably. It's an incomplete application, and as my colleague, Mr. Peck, had said, it sets bad precedent. And I know that's unfortunate news, but I think that's our only course of action, and as a result, I won't make a vote. The conditions that you had asked for won't satisfy the requirements of, of the ordinance. That's something that can be tacked on. I'm sorry, and I hope you heard the reluctance, the reluctance in the members' voices as we tried to navigate through this, because we would like to see this happen for you and for our city. But...
Okay.
I don't believe it's going to at this time.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Listening to other members of the board, I mean, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Peck, the Vice Chairman Peck, that, you know, we don't want to set bad precedent on something like this. I would probably suggest another continuance, but I understand there's been reservations about granting another continuance for this, and because of the timing it might take to get a topography plan. So, I would suggest, you know, that other members of the board consider it, another, another continuance. Otherwise, I think, sir, your best bet is probably withdrawing the application without prejudice, getting everything in order and refiling. I don't want to, you know, obviously, I, I think it's been made clear by the board, we want to see something happen to the property, it's just everything's not, the I, the Ts aren't crossed, the Is aren't dotted, there's some stuff that are missing. But I would make the recommendation of one more continuance if, and other members of the board would consider it. But that's, that's my, that's my suggestion, so.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
I could support another continuance. We don't know if you'll find this civil engineer available that could shoot the grades and develop a strategy to mitigate the drainage, you know, in, in a week's time. But right now, it's summertime, and people are out straight with work that they've already committed to, so it's a long shot. But I think that we could support a continuance and just hope for the best.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my colleagues. I'll support continuance. Like my colleague said, sir, we, I also want to see this project happen and go through. I think it's good for the, for the neighborhood, good for you, good for everybody, good for the city. You know, I just want to make sure the, the package and all the documents are completed as, as required per zoning. So, I'm open to a continuance, and, you know, you work with a surveyor or another person, and hopefully you get it being done in, in a timely manner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, your options now is, you're getting the tone from the board. This, this is, this is not going favorably in light of the lack of preparedness on, on the application. So, the board as a whole has committed to, to another continuance to get a civil engineer in line for that topo, or you can move forward with a vote and read the cards, if you will, or you can withdraw without prejudice and resubmit. As you can see from the board, we, we do want to see this project move forward, and I know timing isn't the essence, and we understand that. But the city as a whole and the zoning bylaws is what the purview of this board is for. So, would you like to move forward with a vote? Would you like to move forward with a continuance?
I guess I would have to go with another continuance then.
Okay, being said.
There's no...
Patrick, what do we have available?
So, there's August 12th and August 26th.
I would suggest August 26th, that will give you ample time to...
So, so let me make it, because, let me make it clear. So, you, so what you want is the topographical, what is it called, topographical line, right? Is that what you want for the next meeting?
That's a requirement of the variance, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But I do think the board should be very specific in terms of what they're looking for, because this has been continued now. This might be continued for a second time. So, just to kind of expedite anything that might...
Dennis, could you set the record straight, please?
I'd suggest that the applicant prepare an existing topo plan and proposed topo plan that shows the extent of the pavement that's similar to what Jared had outlined in the comments, and then is indicating where the drainage gravel area would be, and also indicates what the material will be, whether it's grass, mulch, or gravel. In addition, you may as well add the landscaping and fencing that we were talking about earlier along that property line. I'd also clarify the curb cut to match the drive lane and not be excessive beyond the drive lane. Those would be the items that I'd like to see on the next site plan.
So, so you want the drive cut, right now it's 30, you want it to be 22?
So, the curb cut should be in line with the vehicle drive lane and shouldn't be beyond that. Right now, the way the site plan is developed, according to the surveyor, the existing curb cut remains untouched, which would allow for someone to turn onto the site and basically hit the first car, if you will, that's in that first parking space. So, because of the perpendicular parking layout, it would warrant the curb cut to be in line with the drive aisle. If you were to do new construction, that's how you would do it, and you would protect that first parking space. That was one of the comments that was issued today by Jared.
And Member McCarthy, you mentioned the landscaping and fencing, the, you want, you suggested fencing around, along the entire northerly property line?
Right. So, the surveyor extended the fence just to the storage room, and then when that was removed, because clearly your documents, your floor plans don't have that storage structure, he did not extend the fence, and the landscaping was all removed along the, where it was initially there. So, to be consistent with the intent, the screening should screen the parking field, the drive aisle. Is that helpful? Is that clarified?
Well, to clarify, actually, it would be the east side of the property based on the plan, because if you look at the plan, the lot is facing the top, facing the back part of the lot, so it'd be the east side of the property that's missing a portion of the fence.
Well, is it both? Did you want both?
Right.
So, the back, so, Westford Street is a... I'm sorry, Westford Street is an east-west orientation, so the back of the site is north, as I understand it.
Well, we want the fence to extend on the east side of the property, up to the north, up, north, up to the back end of the lot.
Which, which it does.
Yeah.
And then we want it to continue on the north side and not stop at the edge of where the storage, but to continue, so that it screens that side.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Okay, any other comments? So, so we're going to move to a continuance till August 26th. You heard, you heard the word, the wishes of the board, you're going to work with DPD, get your topo plan, and move forward with the landscape plan, the fencing plan, and the surface. You have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, on ZB 2019-25 for 153 Westford Street. I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to August 26th, 2019.
For a second.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go call.
Chairman.
Chairman Perrin.
Approve continuance till August 26th.
Member Peck.
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan.
Continue to August 26th.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance.
Member Brier.
Approve continuance.
Member Jimena.
Approve continuance.
So, you're going to be continuing to August 26th. Please be prepared coming in that meeting with the appropriate documents so we can move forward with a vote. Thank you. Moving forward under continued business, ZB 2019-29, variances, Justin McFarland at 289 Central Street, Section 6.1.4. The applicant is seeking variance approval to renovate an existing building. At 289 Central Street in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district, the applicant proposes to remodel a building with a mixed-use commercial space and one dwelling unit. The applicant seeks a parking variance of two spaces for the residential use under Section 6.1.4 and any other relief required of a low zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Van Coe. I'm representing Justin McFarland of 902 Development at the property, subject property, 289 Central Street. What we are proposing here is a live-work style unit that we believe is somewhat of a prior use. What we're dealing with here is an existing non-conforming use, probably. There was residents here at some point, probably a business space downstairs, but it's been unoccupied for over two years. So, as we're trying to bring a residential use or this type of mixed-use typology back into the building, we therefore require a parking variance. That's why we're here before you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? You wish to take questions from the board?
No.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask, sorry, I didn't get your name, what's your name again?
Yes, Peter Van Coe.
Okay, yeah, Peter. Did you see the comment, especially the one with the parking variance, the one on B? Do you have a plan for people who ultimately live in the three-bedroom dwelling unit? Do you have a plan for that?
Ultimately, the parking would be street parking for the residents who are living here. And there is ample, some of our studies from other projects have proved that there's ample parking on the street.
So, basically, it's street parking?
Street parking, that is correct.
Oh, okay.
Utilization of the parking garage, all of those things.
Okay. More of a, they're going to have a business in the building, right?
There's potential for a business in the building, that is correct. So, the unit that we are proposing here is a live-work unit, meaning the owner of this property will be able to purchase, they'll be able to live above the same, their place of work potentially. So, let's say someone has their own, basically in-home, say a CPA, an architect, the lawyer, someone of that type of in-home business, they could certainly buy this property. We think it will be a very attractive property for that exact reason.
Yeah, I know. I'm just asking, they're going to be scrambling for parking, basically.
I don't know. You mean for the visitors, people coming in? Certainly, I would seek some clarification probably from Patrick, but at the eventual use of whatever comes in, this isn't going to be like a tenant fit out or something like that. There's not going to be a Dunkin' Donuts coming into the lowest level of this building. It's going to probably be a professional office of some sort. The approvals and what would ultimately that process for the end user, the end buyer, I would need some clarification on as well, but...
We'll just clarify, the parking variance is actually only for the residential dwelling unit, which has lapsed because it has been vacant for more than two years. The commercial space use hasn't lapsed yet, so that's not seeking, does not require a variance for the commercial parking.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So, to answer your question, we're probably putting, maybe if it's a family, we're maybe putting one or two cars on the street that are derivative of that residential dwelling unit.
Good, all right. Let me go down, my other comments for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but I'm really excited about this project. I think that it's a great spot. It looks like a real good use for this building. So, currently, the office is 750 square feet and includes a bathroom with a shower, which sounds more like a living unit.
Understandably. So, there was, there actually is present already in that space plumbing fixtures that match that type of, that type of layout, that, you know, those types of things, there's evidence of a kitchen that was there. This is what we were thinking, is we never know, maybe it could be a family business where someone is also as, they could have employees who could be maybe biking, coming in. Like, for instance, we bike to our office, and sometimes we're wet, we utilize it in office shower often. Now, granted, that's not necessarily for the resident who is above, but potentially for an employee or two, variety of uses. We just want to be flexible because we don't ultimately know who the end buyer will be. So, I guess to answer your question fully, is that there is evidence of prior plumbing fixtures like this being there, we're just replacing it in kind?
Okay, but then the proposed work unit doesn't have a shower in it, is that correct? And has a refrigerator, dishwasher, stove, and a sink?
As currently updated on July 8th, the plans I have here in front of me, first level had a full bath on the first floor in that office, and the work unit simply has a half bath. And I can, I can share these with you, if you would like to take a look. Oh, okay, great. And no kitchen in that, in that work unit.
Oh. What's the date on that?
That's the 8th of this month.
Huh. Do we have those plans?
We don't have those plans, so we just have the original submission, which did have...
Oh, that's indeed, that is indeed true. So, I think there was worry within ISD that possibly we were, we were going to create a separate dwelling unit downstairs.
Yes, that's where I was going.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha, absolutely. And we want to be very clear, we are not trying to do that.
I'll say, so maybe as a condition that the work unit does not include a kitchen for the, for this going forward, but...
Fair enough.
So, is it then proposed that the residential area and the work unit are the same occupants?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. There's not any separations that would suggest otherwise. There's a door that directly connects the residential unit to that office.
Very nice.
So, we are undoubtedly narrowing our potential buyers, but we think it's a really valuable and interesting. I think that live-work units, we see a lot more people working from home. This will be ideal for, for the right kind of person.
And you do have a small door to that triangular little space in the back there?
Yeah, we do, indeed. There's a little courtyard back there. And it's not generous, but that's essentially trash management, things like that.
How is it trash management? Because how does the trash leave that space?
It has to come back out through the building. Yeah.
That's the way it is.
That's the way it is.
I just wanted to ask.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis? Strike that, thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Dennis, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I like the layout and the development of the building. I think one of the requirements that was brought to our attention, though, is the fact that, well, I guess, have you had a chance to look at the comments that were submitted by DPD?
Comments submitted by DPD?
Yes, by, actually, it's Mr. Burns here who submitted the comments, and he...
I'm not familiar with them, no.
Okay.
I submitted comments to Sergio, who represents the applicant.
Right. Okay, well, one of the comments brought up was the fact that, you know, Section 6.1.6.5 requires leasing spaces in a public home parking lot. Has that been, has some plan been made to lease parking spots, parking spaces in the early garage?
Yes, I do recall, that is ideal, yes. We would like to, as a component of this, probably lease a parking space through this. So, reserving one, whatever, whatever it means, as, if this would go rental, we probably, as the landlords, would also rent a space as a, as a component of the building.
Okay, so, do we have to condition that, Patrick, that they provide adequate evidence that spaces have been leased?
Yeah.
Sure.
You can condition that, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we've had notice letters submitted by the parking department, so...
Okay, great.
So, that's, that's the only real issue I have. I'm actually glad to see the, the property's been sitting big and for quite some time. I'm actually glad to see that it's going to make some use of it, so. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have similar concerns to my colleague. Well, I think this is a unique historical building, and this, this purpose of this mixed-use commercial and dwelling unit is actually going to be a good fit, I think, in downtown, in this area. I did have concerns with the parking plan, but it seems like Mr. Van Coe is going to lease some spots from one of the parking garages, so I think that's one of the comments I saw that, you know, parking's always an issue. So, I, you know, to hear that, we're going to lease one or two spots from the garages for the, for the people ultimately who's going to live in the units, I think it's going to work out for them and for everyone in the city. So, overall, I think this is a good project. I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. So, sir, as you heard the wish of the board, you have two conditions here. Clearly, we're going to need an update on A5, A005, to show that that kitchen is not going to be there.
Absolutely.
I know that's in the submittal, so if you could, do you have a copy of that tonight?
I do. I have a copy of that tonight. I'm glad to pass that over.
If I could take one copy and I could initial and submit it as part of the record, that'd be fabulous. Thank you very much. Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much. So, let the record show, petitioner has submitted an updated plan with the exclusion of the kitchen and the work unit dated 7/8/19, A005. And they'll submit that as part of the record. And then the other condition, Mr. Clerk?
Submit, submit evidence to DPD of leasing of parking spaces, I guess it would have to be the early garage, right, which is the closest?
That would just be a notice letter from, from them that you've engaged in a lease contract.
Excellent.
Any other comments or concerns?
Should we list that as two parking spaces that we were saying, Sean?
Yeah, it would have to be lease of two parking spaces in the...
Great, okay. That would be good for a family. Perfect.
Theoretically, even though we all know it would probably be the early garage, it's in the, most nearest city, city-owned parking.
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
Any other comments? That being said, may I motion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-29 for 289 Central Street for variance under Section 6.1.4 for parking with the previously mentioned condition.
You have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approve the conditions.
Member Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier.
Approve the condition.
Member Jimena.
Approve the condition.
Sir, you've been approved. Thank you for the updated copy.
Excellent.
Best of luck over there.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We'll be seeing you again here in August.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2019-30, variances. Eagle Building Property LLC at 20 Academy Drive, Section 5.1 and 8.1. The applicant is seeking variance approval from the zoning board to convert an existing building into 12 studio apartments. The applicant is seeking to reinstate previous approvals from the board that he last year for work commenced. The property is in the traditional neighborhood multifamily TM zoning district and requires variance under Section 5.1. Table of dimensional requirements for lot area per dwelling unit and usable open space under Section 8.1.2 and 8.1.3.4 and any other relief required on low zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening. Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of Eagle Building Property LLC. I'm here tonight to request a continuance until the next hearing so I can address the comments that I received on Friday as well as this morning.
Certainly, and I do apologize, I would have taken the agenda items out of order if I was more dubious in my note-taking. That being said, just clarification on the next date would be...
August 12th.
August 12th.
Yes.
Comfortable with that, Counselor?
Yes, I would appreciate it.
May I have a motion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a continuance of ZB 2019-30 for 20 Academy Drive, 19 to 20 Academy Drive, continue it to August 12, 2019.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Continue to A12.
Member Peck.
Approve the continuance.
Member Callahan.
Continue to August 12, 2019.
Member McCarthy.
Continue to August 12.
Member Brier.
Approve the continuance.
Member Jimena.
Approve the condition.
Counselor, you've been continued. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
See you then.
This is 20 Academy Drive, what's the request?
Moving forward under...
It's now, no, until August 12.
Oh, sir, that, that has been continued to August 12, two weeks from today. Moving forward under other business. We have an administrative review for 102 Appleton Street, ZB 2018-27 for variance, Einstein Realty LLC at 102 Appleton Street. Applicant is seeking an extension for previously granted variances to redevelop an existing buildings and two commercial units and four apartments. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight requesting an extension, a six-month extension of a variance which was granted by this board back on August 27th of 2018. The variance was issued pursuant to 6.1.4 for lack of off-street parking. So, since that variance was granted, my client has worked with the, his architect to finalize his floor plans. He has worked with Steve Stoll to approve the facade of the building. All that has been done. They started looking at contractors. That process has taken a little bit longer than anticipated due to budget concerns and finding the right contractor for the job. So, for those reasons, we're requesting an extension for six months to give the applicant time to get a contractor onboard, get the permits pulled, and start on the redevelopment of the project. So, appreciate any consideration you can give to the request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Counselors. You would be looking to February, March of 2020.
February of 2020, correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up comments, board. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Dennis?
I'm in favor of this extending it, but I just have a question on the plans. Did the building design add a floor? The roof deck got developed a little further than it was, or...
No. No, no, no change to the, no substantial change to the plans that were submitted to this board.
It, it looks different for some reason, it looks better.
I think that's the Dunn Street.
Yeah, that's...
I am looking at Dunn Street. Thank you. That explains it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean.
No questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
No questions, comments, concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Counselor, we will move to a vote. We have a motion.
Through, Mr. Chairman, on 2018-27 for 102 Appleton Street, I'd like to make a motion for a six-month continuance.
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the extension to 20.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have questions either.
Oh, I'm sorry, Philip. Comment?
I withdraw the motion for the time, let Philip make his.
Hey, Philip, I apologize.
Philip.
Roll call.
Mr. Clerk?
Again, through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on 2018-27, ZB 2018-27, 102 Appleton Street for a six-month extension.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the extension to, to 20, 20.
Member Beck?
Approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve the extension.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the extension.
Member Brier?
Approve.
Member Jamina?
Approve the continuance.
Been approved, Counselor, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
See you, good luck over there.
Thank you.
Moving under other business, an administrative review at 279 Dutton Street, ZB 2018-20 for variances, applicant is George Theodoro Esquia, 279 Dutton Street, sections 5.1 and 6.1, applicant is seeking an extension of previously granted variance for the construction of two stories and two residential dwelling units in the existing building in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district, the extension for the granted relief under 6.1 for off-street parking and section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, frontage and any other relief required of the low zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodoro, representing Christopher Natale. This, we're requesting an extension of the variance that we had obtained, as a matter of fact, this goes back to, we had an initial variance of this property here in which we had approval for four residential units, and we came back to the board, and we received another variance to add two floors, and that would make the six residential units, which we had approval for. Over the last year, we've worked with Steve Stoll of the Historic Board, as well as Charles Tenetti of the National Park Service. What we've done during that period of time has gone over a number of, of plans to fit this in with the Historic Board and to obtain the Historic Board approval. In the past, from my experience in working with the Historic Board, they've always been reluctant to fit in a plan for, in addition to an existing building with the Historic District, to actually fit that plan in and merge it in. They always would have a preference to have the new structure look like the new structure. Well, here, what we've done, as you can see from the handout that I gave, gave you, from, which was the old D H Wilson Plumbing Supply Company, and I believe the building was built in 1890, and it had an additional floor to it at the time. So, what, what Mr. Natale did is work to add that floor, to emulate that old plan, and, and to, to go ahead and fit that in, and what we've done is, we did in June, we obtained the approval from the Historic Board to do that. And we are adding the two floors in accordance with the Historic Board approval, and the plans have reconfigured in a way for those top two units, because they're gonna be three, three-bedroom units, and we've redone the roof deck, the roof deck in compliance with what the zoning board, I mean, what the Historic Board was looking for to minimize, they didn't want to look up there that had a look of a roof deck necessarily, they wanted to have a more conservative rendition of it, and it was done where the, there are two master bedrooms for the, for units five and six that are gonna be on the, the upper level. And, and what they've done is try to replicate as best they can, the, the historic, the historic description of the building that you have there. So, this is all have been approved, and, and, and our variance was, was, is again extended for one year, which actually expires tomorrow, we originally had this on the agenda for the July 8. And going forward on it, we've done a great deal of, of what we call demolition work within the premises over this last year, 300 yards of debris have been taken out of this property to date. So, we, you know, we have been doing, while we had, we're not able to go ahead and file for a building permit because we didn't have the approval from the Historic Board, we did go forward on this and remove the debris that's within there, and as a matter of fact, a step further that Mr. Natale did is while he was doing this demolition work, although it's not required, he put in a fire alarm system, that is, fire alarm system, of course, connected to the, to the City of Lowell Fire Department, primarily because as a property owner on this block, in which he owns the block down the street, he is aware that there are a number of other residential buildings in this area, and they are all connected to one another, so in order to protect his investment, to protect the other residents that are abutting this, he placed, he put in the fire alarm. So, I would ask this board, if it is within your discretion to grant it out for one year, I would go ahead and do that, however, we are in the process of going forward, of doing this, Mr. Natale is excited about this, he couldn't be here tonight, although if he was here, he would, he would love to talk to you about it even further. The first floor, you know, has, there's two, two-bedroom units and utilizing the basement, there are two one-bedroom units on the second floor, and the third floor, I mean, the, the third and, and, and fourth floors there, we've got the fifth and sixth units, and those are actually, the facade is actually different than, than what is within that, those are actually, you know, the additional stories that are there, but in order to preserve that look to it, that's the way it was configured, and we think, we think that he's done a wonderful job.
Great, thank you, do appreciate the, the renditions. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. So, Counselor, just to confirm, you'd be suitable for a one-year extension, is that what?
Right, I, I don't believe we're gonna need it, but it, it makes it, you know, to put that out there to protect the client, but we are gonna go forward because he's excited about this project.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Like to open it up to the board, Philip?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, no comments.
Thank you, Philip, Mark?
Exciting project, Attorney, and I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, Dennis?
I'm in favor of the one-year extension, I'm really excited about this project, it, so, it's gotten to be much more in line with what was originally built, I think, before the top floor was taken off.
It, it is.
Does look a lot more like the original structure.
And.
It's more of a restoration, even though you're doing.
It is, and it's something, that's something the Historic Board doesn't generally do when we're adding something.
Right.
It is a restoration, and what it took to tie, to tie this in to what the existing, the previous rendition that we had, if it wasn't for an advertisement that you see, that's where it comes out of, an ad for, over the plumbing business.
River Seagarden.
If it wasn't for that, we wouldn't have any evidence of this, and we wouldn't have even a chance to go forward to do this restoration, to add that floor on the top. And so, that's, but we've tied it in with what we think is, and, you know, Barry Gannick, who's the architect on this, he did a wonderful job.
And you're almost doubling the square footage.
That's right.
You're going from three levels to six levels.
That's right.
That's, that's amazing.
And, and those two top levels are both three-bedroom units, which are gonna be very large, nicely done units, which will be all rental units, this is, Mr. Natale owns his properties when he develops them and rents them, and he always builds out a quality, a quality unit.
Is there solar being proposed here, electric heat pumps, is he getting?
If we were doing any of that, we'd have to go back to the Historic Board to get some approval on that, if there's any exterior solar panels or anything, but, I mean, that's something that should be considered in, in building it, it's something that should, as you can see, there's, the, the, the physical utilities that are gonna have to be put in here are not up on the roof, those are gonna have, and they're not gonna be laid out off the side of the building either.
I'm expecting that there'll probably be heat pumps, which would be ideal, but I'm just thinking that the solar on that roof would be an, you know.
Would be ideal.
Yeah, would be, yeah, anyway, just thought I'd ask, okay, I'm excited, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Sean Van.
I have no concerns, comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Counselor is, is always very well-prepared, always looking out for, for the best interest of your client, Mr. Natale has done superb work in the city and is always committed to his properties, he's committed to maintaining the historic value, he does everything right, and that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, as you can see, his name will be on the top of the building.
I did notice that, yeah, so.
So, he, you know, he, I'm sure he's excited about this to do the best job that he can.
And I'm, and I'm very confident he will, as he does in all his projects, and he should have his name in the building, quite frankly. So, we are looking to approve our extension for one year, may I have a motion, please?
Through, Mr. Chairman, on ZB 2018-20 for 279 Dutton Street, make a motion to extend for one year.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve a one-year extension.
Member Peck?
Approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve one-year extension.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the one-year extension.
Member Brier?
Approve.
Member Jamina?
Approve the one-year extension.
Counselor, you've been unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck over there, give Mr. Natale our best.
We will, have a very good night.
Take care. Moving forward for an administrative review at 256 Trotting Park Road, ZB 2018-22 for a variance, Lenny De Souza at 256 Trotting Park Road, section 5.1, applicant seeking an extension for previously granted variances for the construction of a single-family home at 256 Trotting Park Road in the suburban neighborhood single-family SF zoning district. The extension for the granted relief was under section 5.1 for minimum, minimum frontage and any other relief required on the zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good, good, good evening, my name's Lenny De Souza, I'm seeking an extension, a one-year extension for a previously granted variance for construction of a single-family home.
Thank you very much, appreciate your coming, I appreciate your patience tonight, being the last on the agenda.
All right.
That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, like to open it up to the board, Dennis?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask, so what has taken place in the past, I think, what, year or so that we've granted the variance and?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my finances together.
Okay, and you think that a year extension's gonna be able to satisfy the refinement?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor of it, I just wanted to have some kind of understanding as to what's taken place, but, great, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean?
No questions, comments, or concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Van?
I have no concerns, best of luck, Mr. De Souza.
Thank you, Van, Philip?
I'll, no, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Philip, Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, we have, we have no comments, and we appreciate your coming this evening, that being said, may I have a motion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, on ZB 2018-22 for 256 Trotting Park Road, I'd like to make a motion for extension for one year.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve one-year extension.
Member Peck?
Approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve the extension for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the extension.
Member Brier?
Approve.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Sir, you've been approved for your extension, we wish you the best of luck in the project moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night. Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval for June 24, 2019, anyone have any comments, edits, or revisions? May I have a motion to accept?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for June 24, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Member, Chairman Perrin?
Accept the minutes for June 24.
Member Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve minutes for June 24.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the minutes for June 24.
Member Brier?
Approve.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
That being said, any other comments or concerns? Do you have any handouts for our next meeting?
I, I do, I have just one for the August 12 meeting, it is at, on Florence Road.
Okay, thank you, we'll take that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I do have one, one comment, just, just in general to, to DPD, I just wanted, Mr. Burns does amazing work, all the, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. McCall, the whole City Department and all that, I just wanted to, to request, just going forward, there's, there's been at least two, two hearings that I've noticed that petitioners or applicants are coming in without, you know, the prerequisites or the required documents. I would like to see going forward, just to, not to make the public or the petitioner wait or be continued because of, you know, missed documents, if we can get all that, all that ahead of time, kind of like in the screening intake process, that, that would be appreciated, only because I don't wanna see the public or, or the applicant come, and we have to, you know, continue it or whatever the, the reason is for the, and, and it's required documents for, just for the, for us to review, so I wanted to, to, to say those comments real quick, but the DPD and everyone does amazing work, I just wanted to add that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
You want us, thank you for your comment, do you want us not to accept the application or not let it, not schedule it for a meeting until a plan shows the requirements in the ordinance? I guess, is that what you're suggesting, or?
That's what I'm suggesting, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board, like I said, it, it creates a little bit of confusion or hassle or just more backlog, and it puts, I don't wanna say the board, but at least it puts, I feel like it puts me in a precarious situation where I'm reviewing an applicant and then missing this document, this, this, you know, this site plan, this elevation plan, this, you know, these parking plans, and those are, those are all required documents of, of especially a variance and, and a special apartment, so I would like to see all the prerequisite documents submitted ahead of time to the city, to the, to DPD and all the departments, kind of, because they're the initial intake process, those are just my comments, Mr. Chairman, sorry for my speaking on the turn.
The, if my memory serves me, as I, I believe at one point either yourself or Christine submitted a checklist for approval of all required documents, maybe that, I remember seeing, I don't know when or how far along it was, but.
I've remembered seeing it too, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe it could have been when Mr. Gen was here, or even Aaron, Mr. Clausen, I believe, it's quite a while back, I don't know, Mr. McCarthy might even remember that.
There was at one point a required document checklist that was reviewed by the applicant and, and checked off, and then prior to submittal, so maybe we have to look in the archives of that checklist.
Sure, sure, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking actually, one in general that we were speaking about today, at the application itself, the variance supplement, and there is a portion that says, please check off all items that are enclosed, and it lists pretty much everything that we're, we should be having, I mean, obviously, there's our, there are items that probably we don't need if it's not, if it doesn't apply, but maybe that needs to be more scrutinized on submission before it gets submitted to the board for review, because looking at the one in particular, there's nothing checked off. There's actually one thing, there's two, there's one thing written next to it, it's basically the filing fee, and something circled about a narrative, nothing's checked off. Yeah, I understand, maybe we should be taking a little bit closer look when we get these, but on the, again, obviously, Patrick, you know, we appreciate everything that you, Christine, and Jared do, and you guys do God's work, but, yeah, I think we gotta start scrutinizing, looking at these more fine, fine-toothed, to make sure everything's, make sure those boxes are checked off and everything's submitted properly, so.
Dennis?
Yeah.
I, I know in the past, we've received a lot of applications that don't have the prerequisites met. In fact, we've received applications that have few of the prerequisites met as far as the drawings being prepared by a surveyor or an engineer, often their hand sketches. And I don't know if it should be dialogue with the department, DPD, to understand where the gray area is that we should be accepting, or if we just make a blanket statement that nothing is put in front of us that doesn't meet all the prerequisites, or maybe there's a narrative that goes with the documents that explains why the prerequisites aren't being met. I'm not sure what the right answer is there, but I, I know from my experience here on the board for the last, I don't know, eight years or whatever, it, we've received very few applications that have been submitted by individual residents that meet all the prerequisites. The only time we get all the prerequisites is companies submitting documents in general, is my, is my experience. So I, I think that maybe Christine or somebody in your office might start a dialogue back and forth as to what our expectation should be, but at least an explanation should be coming from the applicant as to why the prerequisites aren't being met, so that we understand where they, they see it. And if it's financial, I don't know if that's a reasonable answer.
The, I suppose you mean 11.23, and then there's actually 11.24 is plans, and it's A through U.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yep, yep, that's exactly what I'm reading.
Okay.
Because it's clear as to what, and you go through this list and you say, oh, my gosh, how often have we had all these on home addition, you know, kind of thing?
Right.
If it's a client or, it's on, it's on, it's rare that we receive all these prerequisites, in my opinion.
Thank you, Dennis. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo what Verno was saying. I think he's making a salient point. Well, I have a question for Patrick. Patrick, do you think the applicants get their comments from the other boards or committees before they get here?
From the boards or the other departments?
You know, like, we, they are sending, we have some comments from the other committees or the other boards, you know. I just want to find out whether the applicants are receiving those comments before coming.
I mean, we couldn't get comments from you as the board members prior to the petition starts.
No, you, you know what I mean, like, I think from the, from the fire department, the engineering department, we have...
Yeah.
There are, there are comments, which probably the applicant is supposed to meet. I just want to find out whether they are getting those comments before coming to...
Yeah, that, I mean, that's always kind of a frustrating process. We send our, the projects to the interdepartment review team as soon as we get the application, which is about a month before the hearing date. Unfortunately, we can't, you know, we are waiting on comments from other departments. That's just, you know, how that happens.
To be, to be frank, I felt for the first case we had. I think we were sending several times, you know, he's just going back and coming back, going and coming back, you know. It's not really efficient. Probably if we can tell him at one goal, this is what you need to do, then probably he can do all those things before, you know, coming up here. So that's my observation.
I, I do believe historically, when comments come from various department heads, it's generally done through email, and DPD does the best they can to get those emails to the petitioners. To your point, Philip, I think it's, in some cases, I think it's the petitioners aren't opening those emails. I, I think there's just a little bit disconnect. So I think to what we're hearing from the board, I think we, we need to be better disciplined. Clearly, the attorneys, the councils-at-law that come in, that practice this, they're very astute and they're very well-prepared, as are architects and civil engineers in profession, professions. I think when we have residents coming in, trying to do this, I think we are running into a gap stop. So I think we should, as we do have the purview as a board, to not accept applications until all documents are complete. And harshly, I think some of it comes down to fiscal, and I think some of those items aren't submitted because it becomes a financial burden on the petitioner, but that's the obligation in, in the ownership of, of the petitioner. We have rejected plans in the past that come in on cocktail nappings and, you know, handwritten, as Mr. McCarthy said. So as a board, it's clear to me that everyone's comments is, we want that checklist completed. Put you in a tough position, a precarious position, the DPD, because when you're dealing with laypeople and residents who don't do this professionally. I do know from experience, I've been in the office, I, I've had people comment to me how helpful you guys are walking them through these things. I think, for me tonight, the frustration, to, to the point is, it kind of was like coming, going back and forth with the gentleman tonight, put him in a precarious position, put us in a precarious position. However, we did specifically ask for that document. I want that to be clear and part of the record, that top was one of the specified requests for the continuance. So whether it's disconnect, whether it's lack of understanding what that is, or being overzealous in taking your, taking the petitioner's comments from, not a civil engineer, let's put it that way, I think was part of the dilemma that caused the problem tonight. So is it the wish of the board to move in that direction, that we only review and accept applications to 100% completion?
I do think that there's going to be a gray area for some things, like the person that wants to put a deck on the back of their house. Do we need them to do the entire, and it needs a variance? I think we need to have some kind of explanation as to why some things aren't being met. So I, I, I think that it's a little onerous if the person going for the deck on the back of the house that exceeds the setback by two feet, that they then have to do all these engineered plans to, to meet the requirements for the variance, but it is what it states. It is what I was wanting by law state, so we are completely in our right to require it. However, I know in the past, we haven't, and we have given some lenience to the applicants that don't have that, the criteria that would kind of warrant that kind of investment of, you know, $5,000 for engineered plans. But, so I, I think there's a bit of a dialogue as to where the gray area should be, and maybe we look at a different level of criteria for smaller projects or something. I don't know.
I agree. I think the dialogue should, should take place amongst DPD and the board, and legal if necessary. It does, does present itself that we don't want, we don't want, we don't want petitioners coming in here, not prepared. We don't want petitioners coming in here, handing in incomplete packages and thinking it's going to be a rubber stamp and that we're just, we're going through the motions. So, yeah, I think it's a fine balance, and if you can convey that back to, to your team, we can discuss it and infer the balance, like Mr. McCarthy is saying. Yeah, there are going to be certain circumstances. We're going to ask for an architectural, structural plan for a breezeway or a 12-by-12 deck. No. But it does, as Mr. Vice Chair mentioned, it does seem as though we're getting more and more of lackluster presentations and complete applications than we are completions. So if you could pass that message on, have a conversation, maybe it is a narrative that goes out with the application packages and we bring them, because it, it does seem like that's the full consensus of the board. That fair? Okay. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, that being said, I'd like to remind everybody, it is the Folk Festival. Please come downtown and sit in a lull and enjoy the festivities, our multicultural festival of the year. People travel great lengths to get here. The food is wonderful, the people are joyous in celebration of, of their communities. Please participate.
Absolutely agree.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.